Tim Masters is here.
A quick question I had for, I'm going through the minutes. And there was 87 North Elocut Street. See that listed?
The first one. Seventy-one and eighty-one are together.
Seventy-one and eighty-one are together? Okay. Eighty-one or eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven.
My hearing.
I don't know. The way it was listed on the submissions for Elocut Street, they had the numbers wrong. So I corrected it. And those are, those three numbers all have stone fences in front of, the stone wall in front of it. I can't remember, because I don't have the forms, I don't remember what was listed.
Yeah.
It may have been list, I'm sorry.
It's like seventy-one, eighty-one, and eighty-seven. But they only listed-
Eighty-one is seventy-nine. Eighty-one doesn't exist, it's seventy-nine.
There you go.
That was the difference.
Yep. But it also wasn't specifically, it's like, it was weird, because eighty-seven North Elocut has a wall, and it's in the reconnaissance level survey. Seventy-nine is not. But eighty-seven showed up to the meeting.
Okay, so, no Basil yet.
They're texting, or trying to call him?
I just talked to him today, he knew about the meeting, sure.
I just talked to him like an hour and a half ago.
He was here. He took paperwork. Maybe his clocks are slow.
Yeah, it's six oh three. Let's just give him another couple minutes, and then we'll get started. Okay, well, I think we should get started. We'll just bring Basil up to-
He's working on connecting. Yeah, he's connecting now, he should be coming in.
Okay, not sure what to do at this point.
Basil, are you connected through your phone? Did you call in?
No, he's still looking for the link.
Oh, okay.
Basil, he's sitting on six five.
Do you want me to resend it? Would that be easier?
Probably.
Right now. All right Basil, it should be on the way. Not that you can hear me.
I have my speaker on my cellphone.
Oh, okay.
I think he had to update some software. So it was taking him in a loop. Because I know they've released some updates with more security measures, so. Standby. We're in a holding pattern, everyone.
All right.
I think he's coming in, maybe?
Sounds like it.
There we go.
All right.
Okay, it's Basil on.
You getting? There he comes. There's Silver Fox.
Okay, all right, let's get started. So we're here Monday, June eighth, for the work session, and we're able to do this remotely due to Governor Pomos Executive Order two zero two point one. So we'll get right into the Woodsville Business Association. I know Frank Michler's online, and there may be others as well. And let's talk about outdoor seating, and whatever else that we have to discuss. Is Frank still on, Keaton?
I'm here.
Hi Frank.
Is that Frank?
Yes, it is.
Hi Frank.
Hello. You're on, man.
Sure.
Was there anything in particular that the members had given you regarding the outdoor seating requirements needed?
The only thing that, you know, to some of the restaurants, I really haven't talked to anybody real specific about it. But I know I've seen Sorrentino's have kind of banned a little bit, and Glen Park Tavern is setting up in their back parking lot. And, you know, I think that probably is as helpful as anything. Morpat was, had something, I didn't, haven't really gone anything real specific there. But I think letting them do that, and get into some kind of business, having some kind of income, is something very valuable for the restaurants. Other things that the village can do, I mean, I'm kind of in a unique situation. I live in the village, but my business is outside the village. So, you know, I deal with the town more than anything else. And, you know, any kind of permits that a business in the village would need, if they could be expedited somehow, would probably be as helpful as anything.
Okay, so I asked our Code Enforcement Officer, Tim Masters, to be on this meeting tonight, so I just want to say thanks, Tim, for agreeing to. Because I really think that we need to get clarification out to the business owners, restaurant owners specifically, about what you can or cannot do as a village. We work under a little bit of different code requirements than the town of Amherst. For the town of Amherst, from what I understand, it's an administrative procedure to apply for an outdoor seating permit. Under previous administration, we used to be, my understanding, was administrative procedure for outdoor seating, but that was changed under the last administration to go forth, any business asking for that outdoor seating permit would need to go in front of our village planning board. So I'm going to let Tim kind of take it from there, and explain a little bit about what we are able to do and not. Tim, you're on.
Yep, so, basically, you know, as it is, we have to follow the code as it is. For new applications, we still would have to go to planning board, I don't know if we're going to discuss that a little further. You know, Tony, and my thinking at this point is, we will expedite applications, for sure. We'll still need to go through the process, as has been in previous years, with getting in compliance with your fire stuff, and, you know, Tony will do his fire inspections, and do what he can do to get those expedited as fast as possible. The only problem I have right now would be new applications. I know, like Ellie set up her stuff at Glen Park Tavern, which we're not really going to shut down, per se, but she would technically have to go to planning board for a new application, because she hasn't had it already. So, you know, that, in my mind, that's something we'll need to discuss. You know, because otherwise, I'm just doing selective enforcement, which I understand we're in trying times here, but that's, it just gets a little difficult.
Deb, could I say something?
Sure, yeah.
So, this, to me, is a little frustrating. Because I think it was two or three weeks ago, before your previous meeting, Trish sent out an email, letting you guys know this was coming. And, you know, Kathy Hochul actually spoke of it coming. So I feel, I'm just a little disappointed that we haven't made this road a little smoother. You know, we are dying. We are absolutely dying. And, you know, just like all the other small businesses, but, you know, we're open, and it's costing us money to be open. So, you know, anything we can do to make this process far less cumbersome, you know, in the immediate future, you know, if we, like, the SLA is saying, you know, I'm on the board for the New York State Restaurant Association, and the SLA has waived all the rules, you know, well, not all of them, but if it's your property, they're saying, okay, use it, you can use it, but get us a sketch within five days after opening, right? If it's a municipality property, they just need permission from the municipality. So I feel like this board needs to, I understand there's codes, I understand safety of people, and, you know, I'm doing, that's my concern, too. I certainly do not want somebody to get hurt. I don't want people set up in an area that they're going to get run over. So whatever you guys can do to take away the red tape, and, you know, maybe delay the red tape, so, okay, you can open, but subject to approval, one month from now, from the planning board, or whatever, I don't know, but we need help. We really need help. That's it.
Okay, have, have we already discussed? Can you hear me?
Yes, Basil.
Have we already discussed the possibility of not having to go to the planning board, initially, and do it after the fact? Tim, what's your thought on this?
I mean, going forward, I'm perfectly fine with it being an administrative task, coming through my department alone. I mean, basically, me and Tony enforce it anyways. And the guidelines are laid out in the design standard, so as long as that is the guidelines we want to follow going forward, not having it go to planning board, it's fine with me. You know, we're basically just, it's like a building permit, you know, we're looking for compliance with the codes, and then enforcing it from there. So I'm a hundred percent on board with not having it go to the planning board. You know, that's not the way we do it right now, but that might be a longer process than just doing it within a couple of weeks, is the problem.
It's, yeah, the problem is, it's, that's, you know, if that's what the board wants to do, and I'll just also say, before the outdoor seating chapter was added to the zoning code, a few years ago, there was, there was no, the code was silent on the issue. The reason why that was added was because there really was no authority to have outdoor seating before that. And, so, it was written into the code, the planning board had to review those, at least for the initial submittal, and then if people wanted to renew on the same basis, then that could be done administratively. The board could certainly change that, and make it a purely administrative function. I agree with Tim, I don't see any reason the building department couldn't do that, but that would require a code amendment. And that, of course, requires a public hearing. It's a process, it'll take a month.
Yeah, so what do we, what do we have to do to cut that out? In the short term, under, under the, under the emergency orders, what, what is the process to circumvent that?
Assuming the mayor were, would issue an emergency order to modify the code, I guess somewhat similar to the various emergency orders that municipalities have enacted to suspend alternate side of the street parking, and those sorts of things. That the mayor would have to issue an emergency order, and under the current governor's executive orders, that would have to be approved by the Department of Health. I don't know how long that would take. We haven't done that. We haven't gone through that process.
Well, the non-bureaucratic method.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? What has to be approved by the Department of Health?
Any local emergency order that a local Chief Executive Officer, Mayor Supervisor, that has anything to do with the COVID-19, has to be approved by the Department of Health.
Okay, thank you.
Is it county or state?
State.
So, and I think the other question that Chip and I were discussing was whether or not, when the emergency order expires, my guess is that that emergency order would expire as well.
Yes, right, that's the other problem, and I totally understand, this is probably very, very frustrating for those of you who are caught in this bureaucratic situation, but, right, the current emergency declaration of an emergency expires next week.
June fourteenth.
So, the emergency order, actually, under New York State law, these local emergency orders really only last for five days at a time, although they can be renewed over and over again. As long as there is a declaration of an emergency. So, it is, again, I get how frustrating this is, but it is a bureaucratic process to, and the governor, unfortunately, or for whatever reason, you know, probably with good reason, at least in theory, added this extra layer, I think, to prevent a whole lot of inconsistent local orders. I don't think he was, they were thinking about stuff like this, but they issued a blanket order that any local orders had to be approved at the state level. So, there is a super streamlined process for this, because we have a code-based planning board review process. I think that if the board, you know, if the village decides that they're going to get those on the agenda as quickly as possible, and meanwhile, you know, if, if, if the building department's not out there, you know, probably doesn't have the ability to immediately enforce those things anyway, then, you know, that's, I don't know how many businesses and restaurants in the village are looking to do this, that don't already have approved plans.
That was going to be my, that was going to be my question.
I mean, most, most of them, from what we've seen, have just stayed within their limits. So it's not a huge issue, ultimately. You know, Sorrentino's got a couple outside of their gate, which wasn't on their original approval. You know, pretty much everybody else, you know, Panera Bread's inside their gates, you know, Irishman hasn't opened yet, but if she opens, I assume she'll be within her limits. The brewery already got their planning board approval, so they don't need a separate one. You know, it's basically, that's the few that want to go outside their limits, you know, if Eagle House wants to go in their back lot, that's not technically approved. But it's her property, you know, Ellie's in a similar situation, it's not her property, per se, but Zepple's property, but it's a new, it's a new addition, you know, so, you know, those are the, those are the two that I know of off the top of my head, that, that would technically, I'll say, be an issue.
And I don't, and I don't think this is a separate issue, but I'll just mention it, just in case there's any buddies in this situation, although the two Tim just described would not be the situation if they're talking about their backyards. But for anybody who is fronting Main Street, and wants to go out in front, and, and would be extending into the state right of way, we have apps, the village has no control over that. And based on, I believe, the mayor's conversation with DOT last week, seems like DOT is not going to approve any sidewalk sort of cafe-type things in the state right of way, which is not terribly surprising. They've not, they've always been very, very resistant to allow any sort of encroachment into the state DOT right of way. So that's a significant frontage on Main Street.
Yeah, so far Sorrentino's, go ahead.
Do we have any room with, because most of the places, not all, but most of the places that I've spoke with, are going to be using their music on main space, right? That's already been, you guys have plans, we usually get a, you know, a blanket permit. Is there any way to work with that?
Also, I mean, those are, those are mayor's permits, and I, you know, again, I don't really get too involved in those, so I guess if you, I mean, possibly, but those, I don't know exactly what those permits say, when those get issued. I mean, I think those are on, of course, I think for specific day, right, Thursday nights, or-
Right.
Whatever.
I think to Ellie's question, I mean, absolutely, I think that, you know, if it's safe enough and good enough to use for music on, I wouldn't have an issue with tables being set up there. I mean, really, what's the difference if you've got musicians and people standing, or you have just no musicians and tables, right? So, I'm fine with that.
Let me-
I'm missing on that, Tim?
No, yeah, well, let me take a quick look at the code. I mean, it's an interesting, because maybe there's enough, maybe there's enough wiggle room under that chapter, trying to think what authority.
And then the only other question I would have, I guess, is, is there a way, I mean, legally, to just make it a department policy for temporarily for COVID, to allow outdoor seating expansion pending planning board review, and still have them go? You know, when we have the next meeting?
I, I, I don't, not technically, no, I don't think, because, again, we can't-
It's not listed.
You can't waive-
Right.
The, the board can't waive, and the mayor can't even waive without state DOH, and I, you know, DOH probably wouldn't care, but I just don't know how long that process might take, too. And we also have the issue that the mayor already mentioned, that the state of emergency, which is the only thing that gives the mayor the authority to issue a local executive order, or a local emergency order, is going to expire in, what, less than a week?
Okay, but just devil's advocate for a second. I mean, this, this round robin is maddening. So, let's, let's say, Deb issues an executive order that forgoes the planning board review for all new applications for outdoor seating received between now and the end of the emergency on the fourteenth of June. And we submit that to the Department of State, Department of Health, and in the meantime, we start using those outdoor seating. What are they going to do?
I don't know. Similarly, if, if, if people just, if Tim, if people submit plans, and Tim reviews them, and people start using them, and, but Tim says, you got to go to the planning board, as the planning board meets, similar, what are you going to do?
Well, the problem is that I'm just forced to ignore it. I mean, it's, it's really just, my name's got to be on these applications, these permits, is the problem.
So I'm, I don't even think-
If it's pending, I'm not, right, I'm just saying, I'm going to have to, I'm not going to sign it, ultimately, is what's going to happen. It's only one either, because we don't want to be liable for something that hasn't been approved.
Yeah, no, no, I agree, I don't think you can issue-
So- Then you're forced to just ignore it, which is dangerous from another, you know, another aspect. If you're just ignoring one section during the COVID thing, which I understand, you know, what's stopping you from doing that any other time of the year?
So, Brian, so, I don't know if people saw that in the chat, so, the supervisor got, did a, did an executive order on Friday, and got DOH approval on the same day, fair.
Because I think, what were you saying, Deb, that usually when you sign, when you sign the other ones, they go directly to Jim Zamanic, he reviews them, and then he probably submits them on our behalf to Department of Health, and then they're good to go. So, it should go fairly quickly, I would think.
But, but you know what, actually, I'm glad, I can't remember who it was who mentioned the music, but you know what, I didn't, I'll admit, I didn't think of that, and maybe Tim and I got to, but, but there is, I mean, the mayor, the language in under seventy-three four, the mayor can issue a permit for special event outdoor seating.
Ooh.
Doesn't define special event outdoor seating, but I could-
Pandemic seating.
I could be, I could be convinced that this would, would qualify, and I think maybe the mayor could put condition, condition to this, that they have to meet the substantive standards of the outdoor seating requirements, or those music and main plans that have already been approved.
Yeah.
I could, I could, I could live with that.
Oh, I love you, Chip, because I'm the one who mentioned it.
Okay, well, hang on, wait a minute, actually, hang on, I got to back up a second, wait a minute, actually, special event outdoor seating is actually defined, let me read this. A temporary placement, blah, 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 in connection with a special event requiring a permit under seventy-three point four, no such seating shall be utilized for more than three consecutive days. So that only gets you three days.
Can we, can, can we waive that?
It's the same problem, I mean, it is-
Because it's a code issue.
Because it's a code issue.
Is it allowed to be renewed?
Just file it every three days, I know it's-
And unfortunately, it's very clear, it says, any assailant who wishes to place or use seating for more than three consecutive days must come, must comply with seasonal outdoor seating requirements of the zoning code. So, I can get that, I think that can give you three days. The other route, again, if we could do the emergency, or, we should find out what the town submitted, I don't know exactly what is said.
Okay, well, hold, hold the phone for a second, though. Next, next hypothetical. So, so every one of our vendor, every one of our, of our restaurants seeking to do outdoor seating in an expedited fashion, because they have no F-ing choice, files a mayor's permit, and day four comes, and Tim doesn't cite them. Whose fault is that? No one's. We're the enforcing agency here. We choose not to enforce it. Who's coming after us?
Don't know.
Probably nobody.
Probably nobody, but it's, I guess my question is, is that an increase in liability for us, Chip, by any means?
So, what, so somebody, yeah, I mean, if somebody gets injured-
Day four, when he gets injured.
On a, on a thing that was properly permitted, but went beyond the permit date, because we didn't enforce it. And if we- said we have no intention of enforcing, you know, I, I, those are difficult questions to answer and the high, you know, as hypotheticals. Could somebody come after the village on that? Yeah, potentially. I mean, there's always a potential for any village permitted activity that the village could get sued if somebody gets hurt. People like to sue municipalities, um, for those sorts of things. But I, there's no, there's no avenue that does not have any risk. Even if, you know, even if all, they, they got all, they, you make them go through all the processes that's required and there's a permit. Somebody still may assert a claim that you shouldn't have given them the permit as it was a dangerous layout. I mean, so I, I, I just think we need to be a little bit, you know, we always, obviously, as the lawyer, uh, obviously has to always warn you to, we need to be concerned about liability and be cautious about those things. But we also need to recognize that there is no scenario in which you can eliminate all risk. Liability, as long as you, as long as the village is acting reasonably. And if, and I do, if, if these are basically layouts that have been approved because they've been determined to be safe in prior years for prior purposes. I, I don't see a ton of liability exposure under that scenario.
I think in Ellie's case, I think she's already found her application. What if we just allow her to do a mayor's permit in the time being and waive the fee because she's already submitted her fees for her outdoor seating?
By the way, I, sorry, I don't make, I mean, and not to be really, to be, it's three consecutive days or a total of fifteen days. So they could also do three day, I don't know if any of you have any closed days, you know, three days, close for a day, get another one for another three days. Um, you can do that up to, you know, you could do that five times in a row, but, uh, before you hit fifteen days. So I don't know if Ellie or any of the other places, there's a day which you guys are closed. You could also handle it that way. But, or as Matt suggests.
So I, I, I mean, I'm a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with signing that mayor's permit because it is for such a short amount of time and my signature is going to be the one on it. And I, so I think if we go any route, I would prefer to go the executive order route.
I could have that, I, if we don't do that, I, I actually already, you know, I, I, I could have that by tomorrow. And if we could get it in and get it approved, we'd be good to go by tomorrow, if, if our experience is like the town.
Okay.
I mean, and secondly, to that worst case scenario too, I could email planning board members and see if we can have a special meeting should the expiration come up sooner. You know, I, I'm sure that the planning board would be, you know, agreeable to, you know, at least to temporarily approve, you know, these outdoor seating applications.
Right, especially if there's only a handful of them.
Right.
Would you feel, um, Tim, would you feel most comfortable in that approach as well as opposed to that mayor's permit application?
I would, only because it's, it's the easiest, most laid out way, in my opinion, you know? I just don't like the, you know, basically now we're all saying, we're not enforcing some aspect of it at three days. Where this way, at least it's laid out, we have time, I can try and get a planning board special meeting lined up, you know, and see what happens. At least then we have the leeway for now until the, the emergency order, you know, expires to work with.
And, and meanwhile, by the way, if, if the board is inclined to change the code to, to make it, to, to basically remove the planning board requirement for this and, and, and make it just sort of an administrative process that the building department can review, that would also be a very simple amendment. We could get, we could call for, you could call for a public hearing on that tonight if you wanted and we could have that drafted and have that ready. I, I, you know, I, I, I personally don't, because those sections are pretty prescribed about what, what has to be reviewed anyway. I don't really see any reason that the building department can't process those applications. You know, and, and is, you know, I think we might want to put something in there that says, Tim, or the, you know, the code enforcement officer can refer any application that maybe he has some concerns about to the planning board if it looks a little too funky. But otherwise, just say, you know, the default is, go to the planning, you know, go to the building department, as long as you've got all the things you need, you get your permit. Unless Tim sends you to the planning board.
That's how the signage code is worded.
Right, that's kind of like we did with the signage code now.
Yep.
I think we should do that tonight, so I can go off agenda and call for that public hearing. Because quite honestly, I think it's a bunch of, a bunch of red tape that we absolutely don't need. And I'm not sure why that was put into place when it was for having outdoor seating go to planning board for review. So I, I'll go off agenda tonight and I can call for that at what our first, we're only meeting, um, once in July because we have a reorganization meeting.
But aren't, don't you meet again in June?
We do.
You're right, we meet in June, so that would be June twenty, what, June twenty?
Twenty-second.
Do we still have time, Judy, do, would we get time to get the notice into the D?
Yes, we have till four o'clock Friday.
Okay, I, that's again, I can, I can have that draft law by tomorrow too, so.
Okay, so for the public hearing, you can have that drafted for tomorrow or the executive order?
Both, both, they're gonna, both can be very simple.
Okay, so yeah, so if you could draft that executive order and get it over to me, I can get it signed and I can scan it and get it over to Jim Zamanic.
I may, I may just, I mean, I'll draft, but I may just want to see what the town did, because if they've already, you know, why reinvent the wheel? If, if he got something approved that quickly, we might just want to see what his says, I'm sure we can get that. I'll, I'll.
I just sent an email to Jim Zamanic to see if I could get a copy of it and I think I just got it now.
Okay, can you forward that to me, Judy?
Yep.
So on that note, the current executive order for the village runs through June fourteenth, but I'm, I'm guessing that we're gonna extend that because Governor Cuomo's executive order, I believe, is extended through June twenty-fourth.
Well, now he extended today, actually, a bunch of stuff got extended to July seventh.
Okay, so, so this, this will actually maybe play out, you know, well, as far as like calling for the public hearing, having the public hearing. But, um, I definitely think that, you know, it's, it's a lot of red tape and unfortunately, you know, we have to live it right now. And, uh, you know, let's try to minimize that in the future if possible.
Yep.
Okay, so, so just to, so just to summarize then, for, for, for our WBA listeners and everything. So what we're gonna do is, Deb, you're gonna issue an executive order superseding the planning board review issues associated with our current permit application. Tim is going to become, Tim and Tony are gonna be solely responsible for the permit application interpretation and whatnot. Chip is gonna send that, or you're gonna send that to Zamanic, Zamanic's gonna send that to the Department of Health. Hopefully, they're gonna turn that around in a day and theoretically, by this time tomorrow, our building department will be the only gatekeeper on permits for outdoor seating.
At, at, at least so long as we're under a state of emergency.
Right, I was gonna say, and then for the duration of that state of emergency. And in the meantime, we're also moving forward so that two weeks from now, we're holding a public hearing to remove that planning board oversight permanently from our mixed use district code.
That's correct.
Right.
And if that works out that way, then we really wouldn't need to schedule a special public or a planning board meeting. So that would be ideal.
Okay, just a good plan.
Okay, and I ask a question, this is Kate Waterman Culpa. How does that affect historic preservation and local seating code?
So if it's a landmark property, um, that is a good question, whether that would require a certificate of appropriateness.
It's a temporary installation.
As it's constituted now though, there's not many that are listed as property or building. The current, the current listing I have in my office lists, I'm at, like St. Peters and Paul's is a perfect example. On my listing in my office, it labels their property and their buildings as historic. So they would be stuck in a pickle if they wanted to do something on the property. That would trigger historic preservation, from what I understand. You know, like, um, share, their building is historic, but their property is not, so.
Well, it, to, to the extent there's ambiguity about that and whether, you know, I mean, this is, I'm just not, this is up to the mayor. We could also temporarily, cause again, these are not permanent installations. I mean, we could, you could also temporarily waive and to the extent one even is needed, waive the requirement for a certificate of appropriateness to the extent one is required for, for this purpose during the duration of this emergency.
During the duration of the emergency order, correct?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause again, I mean, you know, I, I, obviously the HPC is gonna wanna, you know, they're very concerned about any impacts to landmark properties, but these are, would clearly not be permanent, uh, changes, so, um. But in, so that, that is a possibility too. So if you want, the mayor, if you want me to include that in your emergency order, I can do that.
I mean, it's good to include it. I honestly don't know of any properties besides like share, I may be forgetting a couple, I gotta look at my list.
Well, and like the Starbucks property would eventually be grabbed in that, but.
Yeah, but they're not even gonna open until later this year anyways, so.
Right.
There's only a couple, again, it's just a few that we could address if it comes up.
I, I don't even see how it's relevant, to be honest with you. I mean, we're talking about tables and chairs and a frolics.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, whatever we can do to allow businesses to get the outdoor seating, I am happy to help with that and we should all be. So if it involves a property that's historic, um, I think that we need to wrap that into that executive order and, and treat them just like we would at nonhistoric property.
Yeah, I, I guess I would mention it only, I mean, the only way it would come up for me is if it's, if it's a new fixture and I'm reviewing it under the design standard and the historic preservation guidelines, you know, their traffic, their barriers and all that stuff would fall under historic in certain instances, so that part is correct. But, you know, if you, there's just setting up tables and chairs and it's in a rear yard and we can, you know, temporarily just say they're, they're protected. You know, Matt's right in that instance, but Keith's right in the fact that if it's a permanent fixture, you know, once we change the code, it would, it would trigger historic in certain instances.
Right, yeah, I mean, if they're putting in those, you know, if, if, depending on where they are and how close they are to, to vehicular traffic, you know, the, 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 the barrier requirements that we have under our code are, are, you know, significant. Something, the people, people who may have a landmark then at least need to know that even though they may be getting this temporary, uh, wa- waiver, they're essentially doing that, you know, when it's over, they may have to go back to HPC if they're talking about putting some substantial, um, barrier type things on their property that could affect the historic integrity.
Right.
I think it's a stretch, but sure.
I mean, it's mostly just something I guess to think about for when we rewrite the code section, you know, but me and Chip can work on that.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Yeah, Deb, I just want to add that, uh, the village should be prepared that, um, this will, depending on what happens with each phase and how they lift the restrictions, this might last a little while, because inside, if we are allowed to open, social distancing, we have just lost half our tables, you know? So we're going to continue to use outdoor seating. I just want the village to be prepared for that.
Yep, we're, we're prepared in the building, we're not, Tony's gonna work on some wording, you know, that, that kind of doesn't mention how many tables we're doing outside. That way, we can be a little flexible on that and, and we know with the inside stuff, it's gonna be limited. So we'll work with the wording on that and expiration dates and such. Basically, we're wording it throughout the season. I mean, that's vague for me when the season ends, depending on the weather anyways, so we, we can work with you on that.
Um, so extending that for a second, I mean, we're talking very specifically about restaurants and outdoor seating. What about retail? I mean, this whole conversation is about everything reopening, right? So, um, retail establishments are reopening, they obviously don't have as much distancing issues because they're not, you know, people are milling about as long as they, you know, sort of space things out appropriately. But I can envision there being probably a lot of sidewalk sales. So it seems like the mayor's permit's the right way to go as far as anyone, you know, pumpkins or anyone else who wants to, you know, push out onto the sidewalk. But there again, the issue is, as Chip pointed out, DOT property.
Yeah, so I had a, I had a conversation with DOT last week and, um, you know, I, you know, there's no problem with the sidewalk sale if it's done within the realms of their property, but the DOT, um, did not seem as though they were going to be supportive of encroachment onto their right of way. However, that's not to say that if a business owner is adamant about expanding onto DOT right of way, that we should discourage them from going through the process, which would mean contacting the DOT, filling out a permit, permit, um, supplying, you know, proof of liability, insurance, et cetera, and whatever else goes with that. So I don't want to say that, you know, I don't work for the DOT, um, so I just, you know, i- if there is a property owner that thinks that they can jump through those loops and, uh, and get what they need, more power to them, go for it.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point, Mary. I mean, we, we should not be telling the regular community, I mean, we're reporting what we've, what they've done in the past and what they've indicated. But real bottom line is, it's not our, it's, it's up to DOT. The village is powerless to do anything about what happens in their right of way. And anybody who wants to do that's gonna have to deal with DOT. And like the mayor says, more, more, more power, more power to him.
I mean, we definitely have more flexibility on our sidewalks, so somebody more, more patent stuff that is on Spring Street would have a little more flexibility, obviously, than a person on Main Street. So it depends on the situation too.
Yep.
Is there anything that we can do on our end to help facilitate the process going through the DOT? Seeing as we have, you know, contacts and whatnot, is there, is there anything that we can do to assist the business owner rather than just sending them off into the quagmire and saying, have at it, good luck to you?
You know, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, my own experience with dealing with them is, is difficult. Um, you know, they, they have denied almost every encroachment that I can remember uh, that has been proposed in their right of way since I've been working with the village. But we can always, yeah, I mean, if, if the village wants to support those things, we can, we could, the village could try to intercede, but I don't know. I don't have any, let me put it this way, if you're asking me, I don't think I have any particular sway with, uh, DOT and I don't know if any other village officials believe they do.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if town officials do.
Possibly.
Can't hear you, Al. Nope.
Can't hear you.
You're muffled. Now there's nothing, now you're muted.
Well, I, I think, um, Matt, you, you posed a really good question, because my understanding is that several of our business owners in the village actually reached out to Supervisor Culpa, um, and I think that that was where some confusion came from as far as what is village code and how the town of Amherst operates with their code. So, um, I'm not sure, you know, perhaps, I mean, perhaps Supervisor Culpa has, has greater leeway with DOT, but I, I really can't answer that question.
Well, I'm not even suggesting that he has necessarily greater leeway, it's just a unified front, right? I mean, let's be honest, Main Street runs through both municipalities and they both, and, you know, Snyder and Williamsville and, um, you know, Main Transit all, all would benefit from the ability to, you know, be more visible, stretch out a little bit if they had to, if they felt necessary and, and, you know, I mean, the state, the New York State DOT really shouldn't be standing in the way of New York State's executive orders curtailing our activities just because they're ultra-conservative engineering types, says an ultra-conservative engineering type. You know?
You would think that, but they're still giving Maine and Herschfield a hard time about their signs protruding over the right of way six inches, so.
Yep.
Take that for what it's worth.
Well, that's a permanent installation as opposed to a, a, you know, a rack of blouses and a, and a chair and table, you know?
I just mean, in my mind, six inches up nine feet isn't. I just mean, in my mind, six inches up nine feet isn't hurting anything, but they take a hard stance on some stuff like that. So it depends on what it is.
Yeah.
What if we make an appeal to Frank Cirillo and the DOT powers that be and see, you know, if we can do like a Zoom meeting, just kind of go to bat for, you know, the restaurants, retail, maybe Supervisor Kopa might be available at that time, too. If you want, I can set it up. If that's just throwing the suggestion out there, I can set it up. You know, maybe it's me, Matt, who has great ideas and the mayor and maybe.
I think, you know, the biggest issue that in the conversation that I had with DOT is that, you know, our sidewalks on Main Street, you know, need to be unobstructed. And I don't know if you've noticed, but when I've been out walking, if I'm on the sidewalk and there are people walking towards me, everybody tends to veer off like six feet. So that would literally put people in the parking lane if you have people setting up a rack of blouses outside their storefront and and somebody's going in one direction and another passerby is coming towards them, they're literally then being pushed out into the parking lane. So I think that's going to put an added increase in liability on both DOT and possibly, you know, the Village of Williamsville for allowing that to happen.
Well, it wouldn't be the Village of Williamsville because we're not allowing it to happen. The DOT is allowing it to happen. We're simply advocating for literally the only business strip we have in our municipality who just happens to front on property we don't control.
Yeah, I just want to suggest, if you can hear me now, was could it not be that we basically draft a letter to DOT suggesting that we are in favor, you know, basically in support like what Matt's saying, even to the point where we would could suggest that we could help with enforcement as well? Because that's probably their problem is that they don't have the staff to come out and either inspect the space or even to monitor the spaces it being, you know, looked by. I don't know.
And the other thing is, we may be, we may be, you know, maybe I'm opening up a can of worms here. I'm just saying, you know, like, I, I just absolutely hate being shut down without even the moment's, you know, consideration of like an actual situation. Just nope, nope, we're not doing that. Nope. Because it leaves us in a position where we have no recourse at all. And the DOT gets to be, you know, the big baddie hiding behind the curtain, but they don't actually have to answer to the constituency. They don't have to, you know, hear the grief from the actual people on the ground who are now struggling because the the big bad, you know, faceless DOT said no, you know, like, at least come out from behind the curtain and say it to everybody in public. And, you know, and maybe there's no issue here. Maybe there's no, maybe there is no retailer who wants to push out onto the sidewalk, you know. But I mean, it's like, it's funny to me that we have a mayor's permit that has a sidewalk sale as an option when the vast majority of our of our corporate, you know, retailers are on on Main Street and theoretically are not allowed to use the sidewalk for a sidewalk sale.
Well, I think that 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 permit application hasn't been looked over that deeply in probably many, many years. And certainly the sidewalk sales on there because there are retailers who have sidewalk in front of their business. So.
I get it. But that's my point is that like, you know, unlike unlike the outdoor seating issue where those chairs and tables are going to more or less be there, you know, for 15, 20 weeks, let's say, you know, sidewalk sale is going to be in and out, in and out, in and out, right? And it's going to be on high traffic times and things like that. It it seems like it would be ridiculous for them to to poo poo that. But that's what I'm saying. I'm just, as Ellie was saying, like, this is going to go on for a while, whether we want it to or not. And we can't be reacting to these situations. We should be proacting to these situations. And if this is a situation that could maybe come up or something like it, then we need to get the rules of the road, not just, nope, can't do it.
Okay, so so perhaps the way to handle this then is perhaps the WBA can draft a letter to the Department of Transportation, since it is their businesses that are perhaps looking to expand onto the sidewalk. And perhaps the DOT would listen to a group of businesses as opposed to another local government. So perhaps that's a route to go.
I think that's where we got to do. If you guys can hear me okay. Keaton and I got an email from one of the WBA members that was sent from another one regarding when to do maybe movies in the park. And so I thought I'd bring it before the board. I don't know if we're there yet if the state would allow something like that. They were looking at maybe in July. So, you know, Keaton and I have kicked around some ideas in the past. You know, my other thought was after this email got me to thinking, Jim Zamanik was helping out with the farmers market this weekend and we discussed the idea of using like ball field marking with the chalk to do some lines over in the parking lot, kind of like as a trial. But what if we marked off basically a grid system in the Island Park and it's a first come, first serve? You got to have a grid to watch the movie or something. So I keep saying this, you know, let's put our thinking caps together, you know, what we can or can't do, work with the town. They could show the movie. They also have the ball equipment we could line off. So those are all the other ideas that we're trying to work with. Any comments, ideas?
So, so good. So I think that you do need to work with the town of Amherst and Mary Diana Foley specifically because the town of the Amherst has the movie licensing that we, the village, do not have because of the expense of it. So for us to go out on our own as the Village of Williamsville to show movies, we would be doing so illegally. So if the town of Amherst Youth and Rec is on board for showing the movies, I think I think it's a great idea and something we should look forward to doing.
All right. Yes, so Keena and I work with, get in touch with the town and Jim and we'll kind of throw that around what it looks like. And then this gives us, you know, three or four weeks to kind of get this together. But just wanted to kind of get the temperature on the board. We want to look at something if safe. I'll get with Ben as well, how we do that. So and maybe it's not even Island, maybe it's South Long, I don't know. So we'll discuss all that. Ben, did you have any?
South Long is a much better field to do the movie nights in just because, you know.
It's bigger.
Just bigger. You're going to allow, if you're if you're doing any kind of grids, you definitely have more room there.
And you have more points of entry, too.
Yeah, it's just, it's a better. And I know from when there was a movie that was South Long last summer, Mary Diana Foley spoke about it and she she thought it was a great part. It was a part that she really wasn't familiar with and she thought it was really an ideal location to show a movie. So I tend to agree with that as well.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we'll try to, I'll get with maybe Matt, I don't know if you have like an aerial. I was thinking, because we probably need to create not only grids, but we also have to create walkways that kind of distant. So we probably need to do some kind of grid so that we can calculate kind of what we have. And then we can have the town bring over the the ball striping, you know, chalk thing. And then we just grid it out. And then we've got our grid, basically. And it's a first serve. If you got 40 grit, you know, 40 squares out of it, within the 40 are gone, they're gone, unfortunately. But.
Right.
The association was talking about doing this, you know, maybe Tuesday, Thursday or something, a couple of nights a week. And I say if the town can do that, we pull it off. I said, let's do it. Whatever.
We'll do an online ticket reservation system.
Yeah, that's the safest way to do it, like we discussed.
Which, which, which location would help the businesses most?
Well, I think either one works, works. Okay. I mean, ideally, you know, Island puts you in the middle, you get more foot traffic. But if this is a movie at night, most of the stores are closed anyway. So, I mean, I'll leave that up if anybody from the WBA wants to comment if they would think Island Park is better or South Long. Island is going to be more limited. You know, we may, we may get a dozen squares up back there. I don't know without looking at a diagram. Where South Long, you know, we may get 30 squares out of that one, depending on how we lay it out. So I don't know.
Anything else?
What were you thinking being involved per square? Like you're talking about the grid system, like, I mean, a single family or if it's, you know, I don't know, grandparents that you've kind of been with? I guess what would you kind of limit? Would they, you know, 10 people in a square?
Yeah, there's logistics we have to think about, you know, because I agree with you. It's basically a family per square. And if you're bringing somebody in your square, then it's it's on you, I think, that, you know, you didn't just find some family on the side of the road and bring them with you in your square. But I see your point. I mean, we probably should think of that because there's going to come a point where there's going to be some big families and they may not fit in the square.
Yeah.
Right. So Ben shaking his head.
So it's, anyone else from WBA or else was who wants to comment on either the outdoor seating or the movie nights?
Or any other things that we can help with while we're doing executive orders? That was kind of our reasoning, you know, for doing this tonight was if we're going to do an executive order, if there's something we're missing or we had to do that, we want to do it tonight.
Okay, um, I, I don't have anything else on those topics. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Correspondence. Does anyone have any correspondence to discuss?
I have a couple of letters concerning the stone walls, but I'll save those for the.
Public hearings.
Yeah, save those for the public hearings.
Of the walls.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have those too. Anyone else? Keaton, anything else?
No, I don't have anything either.
Okay. All right. Um, let's get into the cable franchise agreement. I know Chip had sent from our previous board meetings discussion, he had sent the red line document to Mark Meyer Hoffer, a charter communications. And I, you copied me on those emails, Chip, and it looks like he and his team are going to look over the contract and get back to us. And that's kind of where that's at, right?
He acknowledges receipt of our markup today. I sent it to him last week. He acknowledged receipt of it today. Said they were going to look at it and get back to us. And I think, well, we'll see if they have any comments on any of our red lines. But the one issue that I did ask for some additional information from them about is the, the their gross revenue figures and what they subscriber versus nonsubscriber. Because as you may, the board may recall, we discussed that last meeting is, is in their current draft, they're proposing to base their, their franchise fee on their gross revenue, which is defined in this agreement to only be subscriber based revenue. Under our agreement with the prior, their predecessor, it was a broader definition included nonsubscriber revenue. So for enable us to just understand the the magnitude of that potential change, we requested some additional information. So we'll see if what we get with respect to that. But otherwise, hopefully that issue will be resolved and by the next meeting and the board will be in a position to authorize the execution of that agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you. Outdoor seating in the village, we already, I think, talked and came to an agreement on that.
Deb, I'm, Deb?
Yep.
Ellie, Ellie Grenauer here. Just one thing, Chip, you might want to look into the SLA regulations on seating in municipal areas, just so you're aware of them in case one of the restaurateurs comes in with, because the SLA has lifted a lot of regulations. If you'd like, I can send you that.
I'm, I'm aware of those and I've made the village board aware of them. I mean, we'll have to see if we get applications for people who want to occupy municipal, you know, municipal property. Well, the village board will have to decide how they want to, whether they want SLA, one, whether they want to allow that, and two, whether they want SLA to assume jurisdiction over that. So, but I'm aware of that. I brought up that guidance.
All right, great. Thanks. That's a.
Chip, Chip did circulate those to the board and I was able to look at those as well. So, and I think, just one more thing I wanted to mention, Ellie, I did see your post on Facebook. And I was a little puzzled about when you mentioned about keeping the politics out of the seating. And I guess you're probably alluding to the code enforcement because as far as, you know, as far as this sport goes, you know, we're doing what we can within the code and within the law of the village to work with area restaurants and business owners. So I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I know, Debbie, and I appreciate what you guys have done today. It really has given me hope. It wasn't, I guess, politics wasn't the right word. I think it's more the red tape. And like I said, you guys were alerted at your last meeting. So we really should have tried to move it forward at that point. But I appreciate everything you've done today and it makes me feel a lot better. So.
Okay, good. Thanks. Okay, Basil, do you have anything to discuss? Work session? Can you unmute?
Was I, was I silent?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Anyway, no. Keep going.
Do you have any work session discussions?
I think you said no.
Matt?
Nope.
John?
No.
Al, I know you have too. Go ahead.
Yeah, I forwarded over a link I got from the Town Organics Compost Committee. And it was just saying that there was, there was a USDA, I think it was, I forwarded over to Ben to see if that is something that we would be interested in pursuing. You know, it's one thing to apply for grant, but if it's not something we think we could handle doing a compost program, then it may not be worth pursuing. So Ben, did you have any thoughts on, is that something we could handle?
I, I don't believe that we can. We have enough issue with managing the recyclables that we pick up on a biweekly basis.
Right.
And what to do with them, where to take them. I don't see that us adding an element that the town is already doing through their composting grant. I mean, they will be distributing compost bins. Residents will be required to take those bins to Town Compost. We can get those bins from the town. So I'm not exactly sure where we would benefit from this grant.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. That's why I thought I would bring it up to the board and get your input as well, if it's something we should apply for or not. Because I got the numbers from the guys running the program and just the farmers market alone. Last year in their season, we did a ton and a half, almost two tons worth of compost scrap. And I don't know what we pay per ton. But I was quite impressed that we actually collected that much just from the farmers market.
Yeah, we're at about $38 a ton.
But, I mean, that's, it's a small number, you know, just from a farmers market that we actually collected that much, in my opinion, you know, just from.
It certainly is a impressive number. I won't get, don't get me wrong there, but we're just not set up to do.
Yeah.
Action.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have a location at this point. So that's, that's pretty big and the staff and all that. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to just ignore it. So I wanted to kind of discuss it. Um, the second one is basically in line of, you know, what we've all seen going on in our city and stuff. And I worked with some of our committee members to basically draft, you know, our statement on have to other racial issues we have going on. So it also got me to thinking, you know, should we, under Arts and Culture, start a subcommittee to basically do better diversity within our village? And I spoke with them or through text and email with Nate Anderson, he and his wife had spoken to the Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee. And she didn't feel like it was necessarily something we should put under Arts and Culture, but we are, as a group, going to start something. And so anybody who's interested in being a part of that or involved, it's something that's been on my mind even prior to this about doing something. So the village is going to do something I don't. I don't know where we're going to organize it or put it at this point, but I'll meet with Nate Anderson tomorrow regarding that. So, so I'll keep you posted. If anybody's interested, shoot me an email. Um, and that's all I got for work session.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, even just maybe creating another committee altogether.
Yeah, that may be what we do. Yeah.
Chip, do you have anything to discuss?
Hi, sorry, I was actually working on this emergency order. So, um, no, well, there was an executive order, a significant executive order that came out today that will impact municipalities and staffing issues. And as I, I think some of you got the email that, that we're actually doing a very brief webinar tomorrow on that. It's, it's the wording of it, I'll, I'll tell you frankly, is a little bit confusing to me. So I haven't completely absorbed what it's saying exactly in terms of the timing. But, you know, there's been a flurry of activity with this outdoor seating stuff, the SLA stuff that has an impact on municipalities. And now this staffing issue. So it, it just continues to be, you know, we've had to stay, all municipalities in New York, including the village, have had to stay on their toes and be ready to, to respond to stuff as they come out oftentimes without any warning, as it has been with these, these last couple. So we may be talking about procedures for bringing village employees back for those who are not back or are not essential over the next couple of days to figure out, make sure we've got the right procedures in place consistent with the guidance that the state is putting out. Because as, as everyone probably realizes, the state's been issuing lots of guidance for private industry, but there actually is, has been no specific guidance for municipalities and how their operations are supposed to be run. So we're keeping an eye on that.
Okay, so just real quick, Chip, as far as our Department of Public Works, what, what's the current date on when we can have a full crew back in?
Well, you can, it depends somewhat on how many, I apologize, I just don't know the, the answer to this off the top of my head in terms of what percentage of the village's total workforce, village DPW represents, the full complement of the village DPW represents. Because it's possible.
If everybody's here is ten percent.
If everybody's here is ten percent.
Or twenty-five percent, I'm sorry, not ten percent, twenty-five percent.
On any given day, as long as there's not more than fifty percent of the total village staff working, you can have, so that's really the answer. It depends how many non-DPW people are working on it. So for instance, I mean, like if it became necessary to have a full complement of DPW, this is, I'm saying, all of this is, so long as this fifty percent mandate is still in effect. And that's one of the things that the executive order that came out today addressed, which again, I, I think I'll have a better handle on. You know, maybe by tomorrow, exactly what it's saying, because there was a reference to a two-week delay lag in there. So that's what we're trying to get some clarification on. But while we're still in that fifty percent reduction mandate, if, if the village DPW needed all hands on deck to do something, we might just have to send some other people home that day.
But that, that doesn't really take care of the social distancing issue. So isn't that why Cuomo has, like, we keep extending this fifty percent of the workforce? But if I need seven guys side by side to put those dam gates in?
Then they got to wear, they got to wear personal protective equipment, for sure, but.
Well, sure, but I mean, they're, you know, they're still going to be shoulder to shoulder. So is that really like, it's kind of like, it's, you know, fifty of one and half a dozen. I mean, I.
Yeah, but that is, that's why, I mean, if, as long, if they're essential, you know, I mean, there are, sometimes not being able to avoid social or practice social distancing is necessary. I mean, if it's really something that needs to be done, then all we can do is make sure that, that we're using best practices and using PPE. I, I don't know, I mean, it's not for me to decide whether or not that, that, that dam, those, well, actually, there is a legal question about whether those dam gates need to go in under that bizarre old.
That was, that was actually going to be my question, is that, you know, how, just how essential to the earth are the dam gates?
Well, we would have been in last Wednesday taking them out.
Right, because of flood protection, right? I mean, the dam.
We can always, we can always, even under that judgment, if we need to relieve actual flooding conditions, we absolutely can take those out.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right. So just to be clear, so the dam's sole purpose is to wet the Western Channel for the Cayuga Street residents who won that lawsuit a hundred years ago?
Not, not quite a hundred years ago, but yes.
Right?
I, I can't say that that's the sole purpose of it, but as a result of that judgment, they have, they have an interest in, you know, they have a judgment against the village that limits our ability to take those out.
So I did, and that was why I actually brought that up, because I have heard from a couple of those residents this week on the creekside that were inquiring as to when possibly those gates might go in. And there were complaints of, you know, mosquitoes and, you know, stagnant water. And so I just kind of wanted to, you know, maybe get a little bit more information.
And, and just, and, you know, again, I, I, I'm still frankly trying to get to the bottom of that decision. It's still a very, very curious decision. The, the reasoning and the basis for it are not explained in the decision. We're trying to get the actual, and why I say that is because it's, it's not really, normally riparian owners, people who have a right to certain water flow is in the natural course of a stream, not an artificial one, which is what they have, but they got to.
Oh, see, that's, that's the thing, that's the thing, Chip, is that, is that the, the natural path of the creek is the west side of Island Park. The artificial channel is the east side.
Is the east side, okay. All right, well, still, I don't see why they're entitled to have dam in place. But at any rate, that, because we, we, we're trying to get the, the paperwork from that lawsuit so we can really see what the arguments were that were advanced, because the decision itself doesn't explain why that judgment was entered.
Chip, isn't there, isn't there also some, some, part of the judgment is that they must supply water to, to the mill at all times?
That's not part of that, that's not part of that judgment. That, that judgment, that, that judgment really just relates to, to the removal of the dam gates and to keep that, that channel watered.
Okay.
That the owner of the mill historically may have a separate right to that, that they may have acquired, you know, they may have, that, that may go back even further. But that's not part of the judgment from this, this case that we're talking about.
All right. Well, I mean, you know, I guess, you know, I just, I don't feel comfortable saying to our DPW crew, you know, get up there side by side, all hands on deck with a face mask and gloves and get this gate in. Because I feel that perhaps there are higher powers that be that perhaps know more about COVID-19 than I do. And if we're recommending, you know, social distancing even for like a movie night in a park, how is it okay then to subject this crew to putting in these gates? So unless somebody, you know, tells me otherwise, I mean, that's kind of where I am with the whole thing.
Yeah, no, and I'm, and I want to be clear, I'm not saying that I think we need to put those in right away. I guess what I'm saying is, is if we don't, is if we don't, might one of those upstream owners claim that we do in fact, well, let them bring us to court. I mean, I, I agree, I think you have, you know.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of my point, is that, is that, you know, when that upstream owner come, brings us to court, the question becomes, how essential is that activity? And if the only reason it's essential is because they have the right to water, well, that, that's not really a good enough reason for me.
Agreed, yeah, agreed. Especially when you're potentially putting, you know, a crew that we've worked so diligently since the start of this in March by, you know, cutting it essentially in half every day, you know, I'm just not, that's just not something I'm interested in doing.
Well, eventually, when we have a mosquito issue with that standing water around that loop, if we don't ever put them in the season? No?
I mean, the, the town sprays for mosquitoes, there's no reason why they can't be spraying for mosquitoes and doing larva side treatments back there now. I mean, I live in a swamp and I see their town mosquito truck drive by all the time. There's no reason they, they couldn't help us out with that. I did reach out to Jim Zamanik and ask about that last week and I haven't heard back. And for the, for the record, most of the water in there is coming from the town's cooling pump.
From where, Ben?
The town's cooling pump, they, they have a deep well that operates their cooling system and it discharges into the creek behind town hall. And most of the water is coming from that system.
Okay.
I had a quick question. So with, let's say, you know, with Tim and I, you know, working outside of the office, does that then allow Ben, his crew, more room so he can have a couple more guys in social distance, of course, you know, doing different projects? But that, that would allow Ben more leeway?
I, in terms of the fifty percent mandate, but what the mayor's concern is, is that, okay, yeah, I understand we can get around the fifty percent thing, but I'm still having people who, maybe it's not safe to have them, or even if it's ten percent, but they're all jammed together and they're not able to socially distance.
Yeah, that, that is a, thank you, Chip, because I, maybe I'm not expressing myself clear enough, but that is exactly my issue with it and my only issue with it.
I think, no, my understanding was is if you can't socially distance, then you need to wear a mask if you can't be less, you know, more than six feet apart from somebody.
Are part timers counted as one when we add total employees?
Yeah, yeah, it, it's really the way I understand and read those executive orders, go 2.4, I think it is on that issue. It, it is, it's just, it's bodies at any given time.
Okay.
I mean, if we do a count here with the ten DPW employees and the ten employees at village hall, it's not even that many now, right?
Right now, no.
So we're under fifty percent of the overall municipal employees, or as is, I mean, we could come back tomorrow.
Let me, let me look up the numbers, because that forty might include, if we had the pool attendance, we might be more like thirty. So I'll, I'll get that number.
We are at thirty.
Yeah, see?
Okay. So with yourself, Hazel, Kelly, Catherine, and one guy in the building department, that's fifteen with my ten employees, including myself.
And then Morgan, I mean, if you were going to have them all in to do something, I could work from home.
I, my point is, I don't think we're going to exceed the fifty percent threshold for any.
Right.
If your total employment is thirty and those guys, there's only ten of those guys, then.
Including me. So that's nine.
Yeah, we're probably fine.
I just, I'm in a position where we're becoming incredibly backlog right now. And it's, it's giving me great errors.
Tell them they got to come back.
All right. We'll do it, as we were planning on Monday.
Okay.
So I, I mean, that's fair for these guys, because they've been living every other day and setting up their lives around that. So we're anticipating return on Monday and that's, that's what we'll do based on this perspective. And maintain our.
The fifteenth?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right, um, anything else?
Um, no, not right now, until, you know, the governor issues another executive order tomorrow, who knows, you know?
And then we can all like scramble again.
Um, is it, we're about done, we may, we'll come back to it, never mind, it's fine.
Yeah, so we've got about five more minutes. Ben, do you want to, do you have anything you want to discuss?
No, I mean, we, we had those emails going around today about the area behind North Allocaid, I'd like to get Chip's opinion on that. But we can talk about that later.
Okay. Do you, who's next? Keaton, do you have anything?
Um, just two quick updates. Our WAC waterfront advisory committee is going to meet Thursday at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And following that, at 7:30, Traffic and Safety has agreed to meet. They've scheduled a meeting through John's efforts and they have a couple of things on their agenda. So a couple of new meetings to add on to the docket this week. That's all I have.
Okay, great. All right, so let's just take like a, a five-minute break and then we'll start our meeting at like 7:32.
Is this coffee break?
Yeah.